Here. Kathy. Here. Butler.
Here.
Armstrong. Knox, Sarah.
Here.
Fisher.
Here.
Pledge of allegiance, please. Is there anybody in the student council to lead us tonight?
Yes, let's see. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you for leading us tonight. If you would give us your name, what grade you're in, what about student council, and anything else you'd like to tell us tonight?
So, I'm Connor Nuno, and yesterday marked the ending of our, well now, last year's student council. So, we raised a grand total of $6,700 for the year. And so now is the start of our new student council, and our new officers were inducted last night. And I will be president, and I'll have them introduce themselves here in a bit. But, so I've played basketball here the past three years, and I've been on student council also the past three years. So, our main goal this year really is, we really, really want to surpass the amount of money we raised this year. And I think we can do it, and we have really good potential for next year.
I'm Shelby Borland, and I'm going to be the secretary for this new year.
I'm Brady Klein. I'm going to be treasurer. I play baseball. I also play football, and I'm involved with athletes in journalism and other stuff, but I'm not going to go in there.
Well, thanks for coming tonight.
Yeah, thank you.
Is there anything else you want to tell us?
No, that would be, it just, we got our goals, and we're, I think we're going to be able to accomplish them this year.
Well, congratulations for being the new president, new officer.
Thank you, thank you.
Are you, are you planning to raise money for any specific reason, or just generally raising?
Yes, we're, well, just generally, but also raising more than we had this year for the fundraiser, which I assume we'll definitely get a vote going. Now, we're going to do it for brain cancer research as well this year.
Okay.
Thanks for coming out tonight. You're welcome to stay, or you can go on to your other activities.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Oh, and Jacob Stone's vice president, but he didn't make it tonight, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to visitors and correspondents, the first thing we have is the recognition of national gold key recipients.
So, Reese Orland's here, and Julia Jenkins. And we have, Reese got gold. Well, you have to win for the state gold to move on to nationals, and then you have to place nationally with the gold, which means first place, in order to be recognized. So, going to nationals is a true honor, but winning nationals is phenomenal. And Reese won with a sculpture of his leg. It's your leg, right? Ish?
Sure.
Okay. And Julia did a piece with her diving in colored pencil, so outstanding artist.
We do have some certificates in honor of you, if you would like to come up here.
Oh.
That way you're not reaching over a teenager.
This one's for you, Reese. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And this one's for you.
Oh.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good work. What are your, what are your plans for the future with your artistic ability?
Um, well, I think I'm going to go to college for a different major. I'm going to have to study forestry.
Oh, interesting. I definitely want to go to school for art, because hopefully become an art teacher, that's my goal, so.
Do you agree on that direction?
Yeah. Appreciate it. Thank you.
We did have a lot of pieces down in Springfield, and it was kind of interesting to see all that placed in the block PIs and everything.
Yeah, I went to that, and then, because the audience, people were like, is Washington a school for the arts or the kids? Because there was such a huge representation, so doing a great job.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Moving on to, is there any other visitors and course of plan that wants to address the board tonight? Moving on to reports, Physical Education Department, Ms. Don Davis.
Thank you. Okay, so, this is real interesting. Because I don't know which one to look at, you know? Okay, so, I'm just going to go through this presentation and read it to you again. Course offerings. If you have any questions, I'm just going to kind of go through the slides if I'm going too fast. This is just kind of a breakdown of the teachers and how many years, things that were involved in, also Zach, Kim, and Joe, and April. These are just some highlights of, like, personal accomplishments in our department. I'm not going to read them to you unless you want me to. Okay. We're real proud of our fitness fair. It's been very successful. It includes a lot of community involvement, and the kids really enjoy it. April Wenzel is the sponsor for the Fitness Club, and they really do a great job with the fitness fair. If you ever have a chance to come, it would be nice if I had that date, but I don't have the date. It's in May.
I want to say the fifth.
Okay, I thought it had a five in it, but I, and they also, one thing that I didn't put up here, but another thing that they do is they do Hope Week, and they raise money for the Dax Foundation, and it gets a lot of students involved. They've raised a lot of money for that, so. Curriculum additions, we've been working on this Panther empowerment program, and what our goal is to meet the social emotional goals that the state has. They have three goals for high schools, but it's not really indicated who's in charge of those. So, we've kind of taken that on ourselves to meet those social emotional goals, and that would include things like stress reduction for students, or bullying content would be in there, just like suicide prevention. All those kind of things go in that, problem solving, team building, and so we've kind of taken that on as the PE department, kind of in a new, fresh light. And then adding brain function, that is a state goal, a new state goal in the last two or three years.
Joan, I'm really curious what the state would come up with as a brain function.
I didn't hear, what did you say?
I'm a little, knowing that's a state goal, and knowing working with the state, I'm a little curious what the state came up with in the definition of brain function.
Well, to be honest, the state goal is rather broad, but basically what they want us to convey to our students is now, research is showing that the benefits of exercise for the brain is even greater than that of for the heart. And so, what they're trying to do is to, you know, add that into our curriculum, so that we can let our students know that daily physical activity helps the brain function. So, like, for example, today we did a 10-minute run across the board, just because research has also shown that cardiovascular exercise boosts brain function for up to 24 hours, so we thought this would be a good time to do it right before our testing. So, you know, we told the kids that today, so that they could begin to see the benefits of that. So, it's just more of a FYI to let the kids, no. These are just like different activities that we've included over the last couple of years. So, these are some of our strengths. I feel like one of our big strengths in PE is collaboration as a department. I mentioned the social emotional goals, curriculum mapping, common assessments, that's pretty much school-wide. The WellNet is a new software that we purchased, I think, two years ago. This will be our second year using it. And later on, when we get to the strengths, I will show the data from, that we've used from that WellNet. The state now has a recommended fitness testing that we have to do, the fitness gram. We've been using it for 10 years, so we're very familiar with that, and that also correlates back to that WellNet. I thought that was a strength of ours within our department. We have five head coaches, three assistants, and two activity sponsors, so we try to do our part in that area as well. Okay, so this is the fitness gram data that I compiled over the last two years that we've had the WellNet. Did I do that? Am I doing that?
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't know if I did it or not.
I was going to say that now. All right, so for the last two years, the fitness gram covers five components of fitness. And so each one of those, like flexibility is a component of fitness, the flexibility test is the sit and reach, curl-ups is the muscular endurance component, push-ups is the strength component, and pacer and one mile is the cardio, cardiovascular endurance. The other standard is body composition. But we do the body composition, but we don't, we don't like take date on that, because we have so many, like, students that, I don't know, it's, we just don't think it's real beneficial to make that, we have some parents that request that we don't use that in our data, kind of for obvious reasons, so. But overall, 69% of our students meet the standards. It's a healthy fit zone that is determined by the fitness gram. And I highlighted, highlighted the pacer and the one mile. I think those are really outstanding goals that we've met there, and I think it impacts long-term health the most, as far as longevity of life. So, now we can look at that as a department, and then set our goals from that, and, you know, maybe, you know, set a little higher goal for the next year. Also, I did some weight training data. They do core lifts regularly, like, I think every three or six weeks, they do core lifts. 97% showed improvement, three out of the five, 91, four out of five, and 82% improvement on all five core lifts. So, that, those are really outstanding data for our weight training program. To be honest, this hasn't really changed that much. You know, with increased enrollment, I mean, we have, we have spaces, but sometimes it's hard in those spaces with the 40 kids, like, for example, in the, like, in the wrestling room, I do, like, we do yoga in there, we do mindfulness in there, but if it's like an activity where people are moving around with 40 students, that's, it's just challenging. Also, our testing and writing assignments, personal fitness goals, the kids set goals every semester for their fitness gram, so it would be nice to have a place where we can, I bring my students in the library, but we just have a lot of classes to get through that loop, so that we put down. Opportunities, these are things that we've done in the community, Bonathon, we don't do that every year, fitness fair, I've already mentioned, and we also try to help facilitate state mandates. These are different partners in the community that we work with on a regular basis throughout our curriculum. Threats to our program, just lawmakers, because they're always, PE is constantly on the chopping block. I'm a part of our state organization, go to the convention every year, speak at the convention a lot, so they send me updates about the legislation that has to do with PE, and it's multiple times every year. So, it's just something that we just constantly battle with, support of PE in high school curriculum. And I'm moving on to the alignment of the district goals, student achievement and curriculum, things that we're using to improve or enhance achievement. Technology, we use the Omron fat analyzer, and that's for the percent body fat that we get, the numbers. And we, we do that in a very personal way. The students do it themselves, so it's not like a teacher doing it. They have the data, they write it down, it's very private to the student. Chromebooks and health have been very helpful. The WellNet has helped me gather all that data for the strengths. Some other technology that we use, we, this semester, we used, like, these kind of smart screens, we did Just Dance, where kids could dance, and we did the P90X workouts. And, I don't know, it's just something different, kids really like it, get a lot of enthusiasm going. So, programs and services, I think the student self-evaluation and assessment of the fitness gram, they, we try to make it as, as self-evaluation as possible. So, like, they might, they do their tests, they record it themselves, they look up their own healthy fit zones, they set their personal goals, and then at the end of the semester, they will write a personal fitness program. So, we're trying to integrate the fitness gram that is required by the state, and to make it meaningful to them, because even though the state has mandated that we do the fitness gram, it also is mandated that we cannot grade on the fitness gram. So, it makes it very challenging for teachers. For example, this is, this is just one example I can think of. I had a student transfer in from Canton, and we were doing sit-ups that day, and my students were doing them, and he looked around, and he goes, "Why are you guys doing this?" And he did like two, and he quit. He goes, "It's not great," and I just looked at him, I said, "It's the Washington way. It's just the way we do things here," you know? And most of our students, as you can tell by our percentages, most of the students do it, most of the students want to exceed. Do we have students that do three or four and then quit? Yes, we do. But it's not the norm, so we're very, we're very happy about that. Finances, we have done a Bonathon to help supplement before. We link with our athletic teams, like, for example, at the end of the volleyball season, I take some volleyballs and donate to the PE department. The basketball team donates basketballs, too. So, we, we do that. It's easy for us, because we're all coaches, so we want to get back to our own program. We try to repair our own equipment. We do have a company that we partner with, it's called ADA Tennis, and a lot of the tennis rackets, badminton rackets, pickleball, if anything that we order from them breaks, they replace it for free. And they've always been like that, so it's really great. Community relations, a lot of these are things I've already talked about. You know, keeping up with our Google Classroom website, so that students can utilize those for, you know, questions that they might have. Just one final thought, it has been, it's been a very challenging year for us in the PE department, with Kevin's needs, and, you know, it is taking a toll. I mean, we, we talk about it every single day, you know, and everyone has been very supportive, and Kevin has mentioned to me how, sometimes just like, we have a saying that up at the stage is where it happens, because that's where we're all together before class, it's where we, we coach at the stage, we learn how to teach at the stage, and so, like, a few weeks ago, I took a picture of all of us at the stage and sent it to Kevin. It really meant a lot to him, so, yeah, that's been really tough, but just continued prayers and thoughts for Kevin. Any questions?
Joan, I hope when they graduate, our students realize what a wonderful opportunity they've had here on a healthful, healthy lifestyle, because that's preventative medicine. It makes a longer life, you have fewer problems, when you take the risks of preventative medicine, it's just the way you go. And our school offers that. We talk about it, our department has honors, and we talk about so many honors in areas, but this is a health honor that our kids have the advantage of here, and it's well organized and documented, and it's a great start for their health as they start going older and going on to other ranges of their lives. So, I hope they appreciate that that is a very important part of our curriculum.
Yeah, it's a validation. And I didn't put it as a strength, but, you know, the support of the board and the administration is a huge strength for our PE program, and, and we know that, we feel that, we do, I say to my students a lot, there's never going to be another time in your life where you're going to set aside one hour for exercise. You know, when you go to, I mean, from here on out, you're going to have to find that time on your own, and we all know how difficult that is. So, I try to point that out to them. Maybe they don't see it now, but maybe they will in the future, so.
And they're trying to fit that hour in. I need a couple of things. A few years back, we moved the weight room back to the near, is that working out really well?
Yes.
You got more room?
Yes, the weight room, yes, the weight room has been a huge success, the upgrades that we've made to it.
Still have a lot more to do.
We do have more to do, but, you know, I think that weight room gets a lot of use, and it's not just during the school day, but every sport is in there. I mean, it's like, it's always in use, so we appreciate being able to keep that updated, because it does get, it does get run down with, with all the use, so, yes.
And then also, at one point, we were partnering with Five Points for different programs. Do we still have any programs over there?
Yes, we still, we still do swimming over there for the block PE. We don't have block PE every single semester, but we do partner with them for swimming, and also the block PE goes over there and works out. So, the answers.
But thanks for all you do. I know the PE department, it's always been there, it's always been solid, but kids don't usually think of that as a core class, although it really is.
Right, right.
And I was going to add, I really like the idea of the stress relief, because I think kids now, more than ever, have just so much anxiety and so anything, and I think it's important that they understand that it's not just physical, it's mental.
Right, right. Yeah.
I love that.
It's definitely the favorite curriculum when I teach it, because they don't have to run that day. But I do think that it's, I think that it's very important, because, you know, I think about when I went to college, and I didn't really know how to problem solve through things, and I didn't know how to control my own stress in my life, and I wished I would have had that component. There's just so many more pressures on students nowadays, and they need to learn how to just, you know, let things go, and so I think it's vital as well.
I just have a fun fact. She knows how to sing the National Anthem really well. Like, if you go to a volleyball, she'll sometimes sing it at the beginning.
I did last year.
Yeah, yeah, it was a little creep.
Thank you, yes.
Well, we do appreciate you presenting, it helps us have a little bit of insight into your department, so thank you for presenting.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Oh, Dean's report, Five Point Two, if there's any questions, that was in the packet. Enrollment report, screening.
We're down four kids from last month, but really we've been holding very sound, so we're feeling pretty good about this year. It seems like we've retained, well, because I think we had right around 30 interim grads, and we started the year with 13, so it's just right now.
Moving on to financial reports, Dr. Joe Sander.
Okay, so in your packet, I included a couple additional reports, and so here we are on the investment report. I did want to make note, the investment that we transitioned, those CDs, we've made over $8,000, and since the middle of January. Okay, to put that in perspective, that's more than what we made all last year in those CDs, and so we're looking to, we're tracking that making about $40,000 in that, in that just simple investment. But here, here we are, total investments. We drop on down to the insurance report. Our expenses have been a little bit more this year in the medical, but our pharmaceutical expenses has been less. You can see that the specific reimbursement, we've had about $50,000 more in stop-loss reimbursement this year, and so, you know, we're still tracking better than what we had done last year, and this is what we love to see in the insurance committee, is when we have two months, definitely well below our break-even line, as far as our expenses to our revenues, okay? The next report is our revenue report. This doesn't change much after we receive our general state, excuse me, our levy, local tax levy, levy income. You'll see that the replacement tax, that's the CPPRT, that is down. We kind of knew that going in, that it was going to be down, that was all the indications from the state that that, that would be down. But we're tracking, you know, we should be at 75% revenue. General state aid is just right there, so we continue to get our general state aid payments, which is really good. And then you can see where we're at as far as our other revenue, you know? This is where we typically are. We should be getting more of the federal revenue as, as, as the year progresses. And then the new report, and I got to give kudos to Michelle Gibbons, there's a lot of information on here, so I'll just take a brief moment to try to highlight some of this. So, this top part is expenses by fund, and, and so we just broke it down. The 1,000 series are salaries, benefits are 2,000 series, and that's going across the top. Any purchase services are 3,000, supplies is 4,000, and so on. So, you can see in the Ed Fund, most of our expenses is tied up in salary and benefits, and that's one of the things that we, you know, we know in education. And so that's what this top graphic looks like. You'll see that, you know, we don't have any salary and benefits in all these other funds, because they're all contained within the O&M Fund and the Transportation Fund. But overall, this is where we're at, total exposure to salaries, and then it benefits. And then as we move across, you'll see that Fund 20, we have quite a few purchase services, and then we have a lot of supply purchases in those, in Fund 20. And so that is another snapshot. And then down here below is, and more of an itemized expenses. So, if you want to see what our cafeteria, and I'm just going to pick on this one, this is what we had budgeted as far as expenses, and this is where we're at. Now cafeteria, you got to keep in mind, we're three-quarters of the way through the year, but the cafeteria operation stops at the end of May, so, you know, so it's sitting at 86%. Eh, it's a little bit more than what we should, but that's a good thing. That means we've been ordering more food to prepare in our cafe, and, and I've got another report that we'll get to, that ties to that later on in the meeting. So, you can see where our transportation expenses are, they're, they're right on target, you know, 73%. We should be at 75% on the way through. And then, of course, the capital projects, this is what we've spent this year so far. And that was out of, I, that's just a shot in the dark. I had budgeted $3 million, but I'll tell you, we haven't had many expenses for the month of January and February, because of the weather. So, we'll see that those expenses will really start to spin up here as we get closer to the end of the fiscal year. And then Michelle threw these graphics in here. I think they're a nice indicator, you know, operations and maintenance, you know, we're tracking really well, and these, this is a fund, whole fund expense, and this is a whole fund expense as well. So, the fact that we're right where we're at with operations and maintenance is a great thing. Keep in mind, we have, you know, about $50,000 in expenses that we're hoping to get on this fiscal year for the underground storage tank, that's a large chunk when you factor that in there, so. So, I threw in another new report. Ford have any questions in regards to that?
That's a really nice report, especially at this time of the year, the way you break it down. I had one question. So, the out-of-district tuition. So the out of district tuition costs is about ninety-four percent expended. Is that because we pay that in advance or are we going to run kind of higher?
Very, very good question. So I'll bring this on up and you're talking about this. This is a difficult one, this out of district tuition cost. What that includes is all of our special services students that do not attend WCHS. And what we're seeing, this tells a story. We're seeing more and more special needs students that come in that have requirements that exceed our ability to provide their educational services. And so these are students that attend tuition based programs outside of Central York. And so we have quite a few that are doing that, more than what had been expected. But it's good trend data for the board to see. And so Brian, thank you for bringing that on up because I just passed right over that. That is a good point. We will, we will blow that budget number significantly because we've had so many students. Now on the flip side of that, because of the decisions the board has made with our own internal autism program, we are able to keep a lot of our students here at WCHS and provide the necessary services for them, which our only other alternative would have been to send them to other schools outside of the district, which would have significantly increased this cost. And so, you know, we're always looking for what services that we can provide here, but we just have to understand that some of our students that come to us, there are not many options other than residential type programs and other type of programs in throughout the state.
Along that same line, where that transportation side, our district, does that go into the special ed fund or does that go into our transportation fund?
So it's, I'm sorry, Glora, I missed the first part of that.
The transportation for these students to go to be educated outside, if it involves transportation rather than boarding.
All of our transportation costs, so like if we have a student that attends the baby folder, it used to be called Hina School in Bloomington, that comes through, we have to pay the cost of the transportation of that student.
Is that in the?
That is in the transportation fund. It's underneath special education, transportation. And so I'll be running those numbers. Last year, we did really well with that budget line. I have a feeling that we're going to be kind of close or slightly over in that budget for this year. That's another really good question because that is, that's captured in Fund Forty, the transportation fund. That's where that cost hits the books. The other one is in the ed fund because it is tied to direct instruction for those So, and I just want to make this clear, that is not, that out of district, that is, that does not include all of the personnel costs that the township, special education. That is a separate set of budget codes that's included in that. Okay?
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Dr. Sander. Okay, moving on to board committee reports. And we had a couple of committees that met since the last month. One was facilities. I can give a little bit of update on that. Facilities, gave the update of the van course bedroom. It's on schedule. They're doing a lot to make it on schedule, but now that the water has broke, it's going a little bit easier. The bleachers, new timeline was presented, and so they have started the footings on that and continuing to work through the end of the school year to be ready to go as soon as school starts to install unless it comes up a little bit quicker than that. What else was in facilities? Oh, the tanks again, we talked about that and Ryan and Dr. Sander has that under control. They're anxious to get the tanks out and the new tanks put back in, so just waiting for some testing and for that actually to happen, right?
Yes, and there is a, there's one office in Chicago that handles the permits for the new above ground storage tank. And so that we're experiencing like a twelve week lag on that. But that's just for the placement of the above ground tank. So we hopefully will be able to get all the other work done. And we're looking at options for the in between period from the time that our underground tank comes out to the time that our, we get the permit for the above ground tank and we can get that put into place and then start utilizing that. Could be a month, could be two months. So we've explored a couple of options. One option is to just utilize local, that's a lot of logistics for Mr. Nelson trying to get buses to and from. And so the other option is, is working with one of the diesel providers, they will bring a temporary tank, which is ironic, you don't need a permit for a temporary tank. But that has a little additional cost. I think Kurt discovered it's like two hundred and fifty dollars a month to have that technical on site. So we're exploring that. We'll know a little bit more as we get a little bit closer.
And then to finish off the facilities meeting, Farnsworth and PJ Air just showed the contingency fund and that's pretty much in line. There wasn't any changes from the prior month. And just that we're on schedule, we're having another meeting soon to be more updated. And so they're out there working pretty happy days.
Well, we got all the tresses up today for the new van room. So when you walk out, you can see all the steel beams. When we got here this morning, there were none. So that's pretty cool to watch.
Was there any other committee meetings besides insurance? No? Okay. Okay, moving on to six, information and discussion items. Six point one, there's a Europe trip for 2021, trip proposal.
Hi. So I'm proposing that art and history come together for a trip to Europe. And I sort of designed the trip because I don't like custom, or I do like custom. I do not like things that are like one size fits all. And I feel like this will hit the things that history department wants to hit and things that the art department want to hit. And I said it so far in the future that it shouldn't stress anyone out with hopefully saving. But right now with, I think they have it at around eighteen people, the trip costs three thousand nine hundred and seventy-one dollars. But if we get above that, it comes down significantly per person. And there's an early signing, like a couple hundred dollars off. And they, they've been gracious enough to withhold that because they were going to cut me off in like a week, but it's been two and a half months to get to this point. So they're holding it till we get this approved. So there are incentives for early signing and if more people sign, they could go down up to six hundred dollars. So that would be at like thirty-three hundred dollars. We're doing four countries. It will be after schools released and I took into account national scholastics just in case. So it'll be mid-June. It's twenty-five monthly payments of a hundred and fifty-six dollars. Two history teachers said that they would come along, the whole art department wants to go about two months before we take off or potentially before even that. I'd like to do classes to, if it's parents or students or teachers or whoever's going to go on the trip, that they know culture and art and history and food and language and all these sort of things so that they're not going into it blind and can kind of navigate the space a little bit better and appreciate what they see, you know, maybe recognize something instead of having to look down and figure it out the whole time. We're going to start out in Munich, Germany, go to the Dachau concentration camp and memorial visit, modern art museum, of course, checking out architecture all along the way. Then go to Salzburg, Baroque and medieval architecture, Mozart's birthplace, Sound and Music highlights, the oldest salt mines in the world. Then hit Burgdorf if we can. I'm hoping to do this and go to Hitler's retreat. I've heard it's really beautiful, but there's a lot of history there with obviously Hitler. Venice, Italy, and do kind of the traditional stuff there with St. Mark's Square, glass blowing demonstration, gondola ride. There's a mask kind of shop, but they show you the art making portion of the masks. And then we were, we're going to Lucerne, Switzerland, but on the way I asked if we could go through Milan and see the Last Supper, some cathedrals, the Duomo. And then in Lucerne, we're going to Mount Pilatus and that has one of the highest elevation and cable car rides, I think. So you go up to the top and I know the history department was excited about that, but I don't know the history behind that, I hate to say. And you can take a little toboggan ride down in the Switz Alps, which I think is pretty cool. Then we finish off in Heidelberg, Germany, see a cuckoo clock demonstration, the Heidelberg Castle, drive through the Black Forest and go to a marketplace and then rest for the rest of the summer. So it should be fun. We're hoping to hit, my personal goal is thirty-six students or people attending, so whether that's parents and students combined or whatever. And the company that we're using is Explorica, which the French teacher currently uses. And he had really good things to say about them and they've been nothing but wonderful to work with so far. So if this does get approved, then we start going heavy into like the, the rules and, and things like that. But as of right now, they said get it approved first, then we'll take the next step.
Has the art department and the social studies department ever combined for a trip or?
No.
Has the art department ever had a trip?
They, from what I've been told, they have gone on trips, but they've never been the ones designing them. So I think, I heard the counselors went on a trip once and the whole art department went, but it wasn't their trip necessarily. So my long-term plan would be to do this again and partner with other departments. So the next one would be science. The next one could be foreign language. The next one could be, you know, constantly kind of spread the wealth to integrate different cross-curricular kinds of things.
Well, it looks really like a nice trip. I actually liked one myself. Not a chaperone, I mean, but no, it looks like you put a lot of work in time in. Is there any other questions?
When would the deadline be to sign up? Because we would want to include some like incoming freshmen.
Right.
Maybe because this is two years, so.
Right. Well, that's kind of all dependent on when I was told it gets approved. Like there's no date set in stone yet.
But I mean, someone could have joined maybe six months before this took place or something.
They could, especially if they're financially secure, because if it's a hundred and fifty dollars for twenty-five months and then they join so late.
They still deserve it.
The cost doesn't change, but more upfront money would be required.
I remember my daughter went on two European trips, one in high school, one in college. And to this day, she talks about them and the meaningfulness of those trips. And especially with our world shrinking, it's such an advantage.
I agree. I love travel.
Have, have you been over to Europe yourself?
I have. And actually I went to Venice in ninety-five and they were talking then about, you know, Venice is sinking and all these things. And so one thing I'd like to show is the documentaries about what they've done with engineering to try to lift Venice or keep the water out. So I'm kind of, I'm both nervous and excited to go because I've seen what happens when the tide comes in and it's a little scary, but it's also really interesting with the engineering, just to see how they've tried to counterbalance it.
Any other questions? Okay, well, thank you for presenting. The New York twenty twenty trip, and that is five of the.
Yep, speaking of trips, so I'll be presenting this. Actually, the information's in the board packet. I know that Mr. Tom met with, met with the band parents who are interested in going on the New York trip, I guess it was last week. It's just one of his, one of his trips that he does. Okay, so he's done this trip before and there's a lot of good information there. But if you have any questions, let us know. This is the information board. So as I mentioned, there's a lot in here, so.
So for us as a board, I mean, we review this and then sometime in the future we.
Next month, I'll bring you as an action item for you. So this is the information stage. So if you have questions during the timeframe between now and next month, fire away and I'll give answers to you.
Moving on to six point three, that's resignation from Iksen Stein, Assistant Janfretko, and resignation from Zoolander, Assistant Tru. And then six point five, NSLP, administrative review.
So I mentioned about the cafeteria. So boy, we've had the state here frequently doing their audit and this comes about every like three years. And so here are the different types of audits we've had. We've had the off-site assessment tool, which is a document that is many, many pages thick. It's classic federal government where you just, they throw out a question and you have to provide evidence and, and documentation to everything from, our wellness policy is included in that. And the other thing that you wouldn't think would be part of our school lunch program, there's, there's other areas that are included in that assessment. And then they spend some time here in January, we do the same thing. We have to provide them a menu. They go through it with a fine tooth comb to make sure that the food that we're serving is covered by the National School Lunch Program guidelines. Then they do an onsite review and that's where the stress really hits and they just sit there and they watch for a couple of days and they document, document, document. And then we just had the financial review in March. And so I sent the board the packet. I will not go through everything there, but a lot of good takeaways today. Laura McHugh Newport gave me her document that she is sending back to them. For each one of the findings, we have to have a correction claim. And so she has that together and she just gave that to me today at the close of business, asked me to review it and then she'll get that sent off. But one of the big things that you'll have an action item later in the agenda is our breakfast lunch prices. Naturally, we've had different school lunch prices, lunch prices for students and adults. And you know, the staff pay a different, different amount, more than our students do. And they recommend that we do that same practice for our breakfast. And so I put all the blurb and justification in there and so there will be an action item later in the agenda for that, so. It was really good. You know, they're the government, they're here to help and, and so we're, there are a lot of good takeaways. We're looking at refining our process, making things that are within the guidelines of National School Lunch Program. And the same boat, they do offer a lot of other good suggestions. But the financial audit, the gentleman that was here had nothing but really good things to say. And his audit is the, you got the handwritten one, there will be, I'll send that, the formal one when that's all done as well.
Okay. That was surprisingly good reading. I mean, it was seriously kind of interesting to, I mean, really, because they observed so closely how kids were going through the checking line and everything, you know, it was really fascinating kind of.
You almost need to counter, you know, when they're going in and said, oh, a bunch of kids at one time going in and one pay, you know, just like one person at a time.
Yeah. Uh huh. It was really interesting how process oriented it was.
It, it is and they look at, you know, times. If you think about it, if it takes, if it takes eight to ten seconds per customer to get through the line, then that gives you less time for students eat. And so, yeah, the end result is really trying to give the kids the best lunch experience that you can, given the parameters that we have to follow.
How many kids actually breakfast here?
You know, I can get that data for you. It's not a lot, but like in our revenue, we do all right with it. If we raise the, you know, the breakfast prices, that allows us to buy better products for the students that come in. But I have to comment, you know, the whole grain biscuits are not like the white flo- fluffy. They're more like hockey pucks. I'm sorry I said that, but they're not, they're not the biscuits of what they used to be. And so there's talk about, you know, less than, not having to be all a hundred percent whole grain, maybe fifty percent.
That's not mandated.
The breakfast is mandated. We have to follow the guidelines.
The menu, all the menu.
Yeah. But it's good. I'm glad that you enjoyed that.
Okay. Any other questions? Moving on to six point six, the summer maintenance.
Just a quick blurb, we're going to have that ready for you hopefully by the next facilities committee meeting. We'll have a draft of that. We're looking at reducing some of our students that are going to be serving on that. And then we have the minimum wage law that's going to go into effect, so we're still working through some of those items as well, but I think we'll, we'll have most of that covered. It's going to be another crazy busy summer.
And they work hard at it, I.
Yes.
And some of them enjoy it too. Moving on to six point seven, graduation, twenty nineteen, Dr. Freeman.
May nineteenth. May 19th, 2019, at 2:00 PM at Bradley University Renaissance Palace. I know that our counseling department and the other people going on the meet at Bradley this week, we will have more detail for you in the future, but the information that I kind of need to get fairly soon is who's interested in branding out in the course? You know, that's a unusual question. I thought it might, I thought it would be.
Yeah. We're at Bitterstein.
His daughter, I think.
His daughter, Chris.
But he'll be home.
The board will be on the tour. Oh, that's, you had another board member who was off.
We let Meyer come in and give him to his daughter.
Yeah.
That's how that went. He picked him up and handed him one to her.
I think that would be nice.
You want my spot first?
Yeah. So we'll send something out just like as a parent parking, and they can park at the, it's in the Renaissance Center, right?
Yeah. We have a lot of learning to do.
Okay. So you'll send it up. And are you going to keep it to an hour?
Oh, we'll do that. It's hard to keep it to an hour. Yeah, yeah. I'm trying to myself on stage. Especially under storm conditions on the football field. I don't know who was sitting next to me, but I was a mess.
It rained before, and it rained after?
Actually, maybe two times, maybe three.
Kyle, you can come, I'll go.
To attend or to hand?
I'll hand them up.
It's really helpful the more people we have.
Well, I will too, that's for four of us.
Okay, any more about graduation until we get all the details? It's going to be nice, it's going to be air-conditioned, climate-controlled, plenty of seating. And the best part is you won't have to go all the way up and pick up and order.
Right.
So, moving on to six point eight, access communications.
Here's a copy, a copy for all the board. We're really pleased with the services that we received, and it's out there for everyone to see. Worldwide.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, moving on to the consent agenda, number seven. The consent agenda is 7.11, the special board meeting minutes of March 4th, 2019. 7.12, the regular board meeting minutes of March 11th, 2019. 7.13, the facilities committee meeting of April 3rd, 2019. Bill 7.2 and 7.3, the IMFR resolution. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented?
So moved. Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Knox Singer?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Essing?
Yes.
McNet?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on to action items. Action items, 8.1 for personnel, 8.11 certified personnel. See who this is. Is there a motion to approve the employment of Cassidy Backer as a special ed teacher for the 2019-2020 school year at the salary as per negotiated contract?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion? Where she's coming from?
She was coming from 51. Ashley Verygood, the report said, and have her on there.
Roll call, please. McNet?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Knox Singer?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Essing?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Moving on to 8.12, non-certified personnel. The Board of Education approved the transition of temporary employment to the full-time employment of Ryan Cook as technology technician effective with the remaining of 2018-2019 school year.
So moved.
Second. Motion is second. Discussion?
We went through that a little bit last month, just talking about the rationale behind it. We continue to grow, we continue to grow in technology, and that means that we have more stress and strain on those who provide the support for those services. So this is definitely important for us to continue to provide the services that we want.
Roll call, please. Butler?
Yes.
Knox Singer?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Essing?
Yes.
McNet?
Yes.
Motion carries, 8.13, leave of absences request. Let me pull this up. Director, those would be, we've got a separate refer.
Um, yes. Well, you could do this part since, since our two requirements, you could approve it in 1.3A and the-
Okay. So for 8.13A and 1.8.13B, approve the absence of Jay Keane's math teacher and approve the leave of absence for requests for our England science teacher. Is there a motion to accept the absence request?
So moved. Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Fisher?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Essing?
Yes.
McNet?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Knox Singer?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Knox Singer?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Knox Singer?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Essing?
Yes.
McNet?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Knox Singer?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Essing?
Yes.
McNet?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Knox Singer?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Essing?
Yes.
Motion carries. Number nine, executive session. We'll move in, is there a motion to move into executive session to 9.15 for the appointment, compensation, discipline, performance, and dismissal of specific employees to the district or legal counsel for the district, including hearing testimony or complaint lodged against the employee or against legal counsel for the district in terms of stability? And then 9.25, student disciplinary cases, and 9.35, security procedures for the use of personnel and equipment to respond to an actual or threatening reasonable potential danger of safety of employees, students, staff, and public or public property. Is there a motion to move into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call, please. Butler?
Yes.
Knox Singer?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Essing?
Yes.
McNet?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Knox Singer?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Okay, there's motion carries. Moving on to 8.4, approve the student and adult breakfast prices for the 2019-2020 school year as presented. Is there a- Any further discussion? Joe talked a little bit about it earlier. It's all presented there.
We don't need to raise the student price because we raised it last time. It just needs to be put in the play. Is that right? Yeah, the, well, the student price was supposed to, it was approved last year at $1.50 for this year. We had a change in personnel, and that communication was dropped, so the students have only been paying $1.40. So the 10 cent that the board approved last year never got enacted, whereas this year-
Okay, so it'll seem like a 20 cent increase to the states, but in all practical purposes, it's 10.
Yeah.
They save 10 cents on it.
Yes, that's the way it's sold.
We gave a refund.
Yeah, we should give a, do a little discount notice. Retracted discount.
The one that it's really going to hurt is the handful of staff, the staff that go down and give breakfast. Wow, 60, 60 cent on that egg McMuffin. Still a good deal.
Okay, roll call, please. McNet?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Knox Singer?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Essing?